You are watching Access LaPorte County Channel ninety-seven. Coming up next is the September thirteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting of the Michigan City Commission on the social status of African-American males. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
Good afternoon, elected copper president, all the Commission on Social Status African-American males. Uh, Bob, everyone refer to your agenda. We're going to stand for Pledge of Allegiance. Fay, could you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
So if you would, right next to me.
Roll power, please, secretary.
What you want to vote to sit right here, man? Nobody can just sit right there.
Willie Mills, that?
Present.
Stacy James?
Present.
Linda Conley?
Present.
Pastor Carol?
Present.
Tony Thomas?
Present.
Jonathan Patrick? Pastor Hertz?
Present.
Pastor Robert Johnson?
Present.
Mike Jones?
Present.
Penny Fly Senior?
Yeah.
Fay Moore? Here. Any one name I did not call? Okay, they will all present.
Thank you. Following the agenda, the chair and team a motion for the August meeting.
Make a motion to accept the August meeting minutes.
Secretary, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion stands. Treasurers report.
Um, I submitted the treasurer's report. I apologize for the late submission. Um, we have a balance of eight hundred and forty-eight dollars and ninety-two cents.
Any questions on the treasurer's report?
I do.
Linda?
I, um, oh, I'm sorry. I received a donation of fifty dollars and I turned it into the clerk's office, but I see she did not give it to you.
Okay, so we'll the receipt here. Okay, thank you so much.
That's all I have to say.
Any other questions on the treasurer's report? No further questions. Chair and team a motion to accept a treasurer's report.
So moved.
Secretary, we have move in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion stands. Thank you, Stacy, for your accounting practices. Uh, more business. Uh, as we voted on last month's meeting, we have two guest speakers. I think one of them is, both of them is from the county. Monique, you were at our last meeting and you had to leave, so we'll take you first. Could you please come to the podium and introduce yourself?
So. Good afternoon, committee members. My name is Monique Thomas. I am the interim HR Director for LaPorte County. Um, I was asked to come and speak on the counties we have regarding our application process and our jobs that we have open at LaPorte County. Um, currently we have anywhere between fourteen or sixteen job openings, uh, ranging anywhere from, uh, our law enforcement uh, to a kennel attendant at our animal shelter. Uh, we do have our jobs posted on our website, www dot laporteco dot in dot gov, or you can go to our, uh, website, laportcounty dot org. Um, just Google LaPorte County and it'll come up. Um, you scroll all the way down to the bottom, under employment, and you will be taken to our webpage where you will see a listing of our job postings. Yes, you can feel free to share that with many members. Um, but our process is really streamlined. You can go online, upload applications, um, complete the information, the fields that are on there, and submit your application. It comes directly to me, uh, right to my email, and, um, we forward them on to our supervisors. And, um, that's pretty much how our process works. So anybody have any questions? Any concerns?
I have a question. So, I, I know after twenty-eight years with county, um, when a person, an applicant submits their application and it goes directly to you, what's the timeframe, the turnaround time that you contact them if, um, the department is looking to interview them?
It really just depends on the supervisor. The supervisor usually, uh, we roughly keep the app, I mean, the job posting up to anywhere between two to three weeks. So it pretty much just depends on the supervisor. And then Stevens can attest to that. It, I mean, you know, there's a lot going on depending on what's going on with the supervisor, but they are pretty much forwarded on to that supervisor. This is their discretion as to the timeframe that they, you know, get all the applicants, go through them, make sure they're qualified, meet the minimum qualifications, and then they are passed on and go through the process of calls or reaching out to make sure they're available for interviews. Um, and from that point, it's up to, uh, the supervisor to know when the start date happens and drug screen, background checks and all of that. And, you know, that takes a process with any job, a job application process. There is a process. So it's anywhere between, um, I'll say like a month or a month and a half.
Okay, and do you do the initial, um, because I know some people don't know, because you are the HR director, um, that the decision is not totally yours, just because you're the
It's not, it's not my decision at all.
Yeah, right. So that you're just kind of like the middle persons in between the departments, um, to filter the applications, but it's up to that department of who they're gonna hire?
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for Monique?
Uh, do they have different age requirements?
Yes, there is an age requirement on some, um, like with our county highway department, they usually, uh, accept eighteen-year-olds. Um, and, and that's doing like maybe seasonal work, um, with our jail. They usually are twenty-one or older. Um, and with our nine-one-one dispatchers, they've recently, um, lowered that age to twenty-one as well.
Any other questions? Any more questions for Monique? If not, thank you.
We are currently looking for a veteran services officer, uh, someone specifically that, um, is a veteran. Um, we are looking to train them to be a certified veterans officer no later than December first, and come December first, that person will go to a full-time status. So, um, if you guys know anybody that is a veteran, um, that does have a, that is honorably, that was honorably discharged and this standing, uh, we are looking for a veteran services officer for LaPorte County.
Is that here in Michigan City?
The office is in LaPorte, but we do have one at the Michigan City courthouse. There is an officer that services the Michigan City area over there part-time. Um, the full-time officer does sit at the LaPorte, LaPorte office. So if you know, as of January one, the position will go to full-time. But from now until December thirty-first, it will be a part-time status until then.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay, Mike?
Yes, uh, did you study on the South Shore hiring practices too?
No, 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 no. I'm not associated or affiliated with the South Shore practices and how they do their process and other.
Will they go through your, your department for employees, South Shore?
No, 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 no. We're not affiliated with South Shore, NICD whatsoever. No, no, their applications don't come to me. Not at all.
Any other questions for me? If not, thank you for your service and I understand you're still interim?
I am interim.
Okay, is there any timeframe for?
I do not know that.
Can I know? Okay, well, you're doing a fantastic job.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Next up, uh, we have Heather.
Let me move that down a little shorter than Monique. Good afternoon. I am Heather Stevens. I am the clerk of the circuit court. Um, and part of my responsibilities as the clerk is handling elections. So the main thing that I am here to talk with all of you about today is our new vote center plan. So no longer in LaPorte County are we bound by the precincts when it comes to time to vote. Um, this vote center plan, which has been passed, it has been, it's been filed with the state. We are now a vote center county. And what that means is that any registered voter in LaPorte County can vote at any polling location. So we were able, we were also, because of this, we were able to get the voting out of the schools in Michigan City, which was, that was huge. That was big for us and it was big for the schools. They, they didn't really want us to be there and it was time for us to scoop. So I, I really just came to see if you have any questions about this. Um, because the best way that we can all get the word out is by talking, which is why I go everywhere and talk to anybody that'll listen to me. Um, no questions yet? Yeah?
Yeah, when is early voting start?
Early voting starts the eleventh of October.
Thank you.
Can you still do mail-in?
Yes. Yep. Yeah, it doesn't change any of that. The only thing that it changes is on election day. So now on election day, if you live in Michigan City, but you work in LaPorte, you can stop at any location and just vote. You don't have to rush back to your precinct, because a lot of what was happening, people move and they forget to update their registration. So they go to where they think they should be voting, and then they learn, no, I have to go all the way across town. I have fifteen minutes to get there, and they don't go. They, they just kind of give up. So this way they'll be able to vote wherever they stop.
And I have a question regarding that. So with that being said, did you experience a lot of people that might have gone to a, uh, an old address? Um, the location of an old address, did you experience a lot of people not voting because of that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's heartbreaking. I mean, you know, our, our intention here is to increase voter turnout. So to me, this was a no-brainer.
Do you still need an ID?
Yes, please bring your Indiana issued ID, and that can be your driver's license, a state ID card. Um, if you go to a state college, we would accept that. Um, you know, right now the passport is still an accepted form of ID. And we will have the mobile voting unit. We have the early voting. We have absentee by mail. You have election day voting. We have travel board. We, I mean, my goal has been, if you are not voting in LaPorte County, it's gotta be because you don't want to. So.
I have a question. Uh, the voting stations, uh, will they be the same or you, um, are painting new voting stations?
Will we be looking for new locations? No. Um, right now, and I, I did, I actually took a picture of it just because I wanted it to be easy access. But I can give you the locations if you'd like to hear them.
Please do.
Okay, um, so we have the Greater Powerhouse Church, and I'm gonna give them to you countywide. Um, IBEW on Eighth Street, A Rise and Shine Bud and Outreach, which is now called something else, and I can't remember what it is, but I'll, I'll have to update this. Um, the Epistolic Lighthouse Church, South Wind Emanuel Church, Faith City Assembly, MC Fire Training Center, the Civic Auditorium in LaPorte, Cummings Lodge in LaPorte, the Presbyterian Church in LaPorte, Moose Lodge in LaPorte, Agape Church, LaPorte, State Street Church, LaPorte. Uh, not this year, but if they had, if they had an election, it would be the Salem United Church in Wantata, the Center of LaCrosse in LaCrosse, Michigan Shore's Fire Department, Kingsbury Fire Department, Kingsford Heights Fire Department, Long Beach Community Center, and Westville American Legion in Westville.
Excuse me. I have a question. My question is, with the voting centers, can you tell us like what is some of the, some of the luxuries that you might not have to encounter so far as sanctuaries and sanctions, maybe people fifty feet or certain things? Does that eliminate some of those things that acquire that might happen, that usually happen when it be at schools? Or some of the things that, uh, you know, does it eliminate anything on that nature of it?
It does not. Those are statutes set by the state, and those go for any location where voting is taking place. So those statutes will remain in place.
Is there anything that is, uh, accommodating with the voting centers that, that's, um, more convenient for the voters?
Just the accessibility, um, just the not being, not being confined to, to only being able to vote at a selected location. That would be the, the main.
Basically, they can vote anywhere in town or any area, no mattering their address or their primary locations. I think that is a great, um, a great plus, just in that in general. I just wanted to make sure that, um, the public knows that we still have statutes in place. Can you just list, run down those statutes that's in place that's not supposed to happen? Oh, it's a lot of them. Like, I know you said fifty feet. I mean, how many of them is it? Fifty feet and then you can't tell voters, how many, is it, is it that many?
There's so many. There are so many statutes and rules and regulations and
What about a typical voter that haven't been to vote before, first-time voter? They come out, they don't realize, they don't pose a tell a person that's close to the door, probably walk up to the door and say, hey, man, I'm voting for such and such. You should too, but that's a violation.
That would be
First-time voter. So that's why I was saying is there's some substantial ones that you can mention that maybe they know right now not to encounter and get themselves in trouble.
Absolutely. Yeah, within that fifty feet of the, of the chute is what we call it. There, there is no electioneering. We, we don't talk about, we don't talk about anything political, and that's not just the voters. That goes for the poll workers as well. Um, but no T-shirts, do not wear, you know, don't, don't come in and please leave those red hats at home. We don't want those either. That's, that's all political gear. We, we don't want to see it. We, we really just want you to come in, show your ID, you're gonna check in, and then our, our poll worker judge will then take you to the voting machine where you will place your ballot and then you leave.
So the voting, I'm, I'm sorry for taking up so much time, but I'm so inquire, have so much to inquire about this. Um, so voting centers in, in whole would be in a location where people still be able to have their signs and do their political campaigning, long as it's within the proper procedure. And so with these centers, they're gonna be placed in a spot where, say, um, you got the corner, but then they got, uh, the street, then the alley. So like, is it, it's gonna be in residential areas or it's just gonna be in a big parking lot?
We, we didn't change locations. We didn't get new locations. We're using, we're using our existing locations, minus the schools.
Oh, I got you.
So we, we didn't place these in any spot, you know, for or against any political campaigning or anything like that. We used what we had.
Okay, that's great.
And we just eliminated a lot of them.
So I have questions.
Oh, yeah, that's the one. Yes, you're coming up.
Just for clarification, for the record, the centers, you're just putting that as an umbrella of the locations. All the locations are still the same. You're just calling it a center just for purposes of a person being, being able to go anywhere to vote.
We did not, we didn't bring new locations. We did get rid of some of the older locations, but we didn't, we didn't bring anything new to the table. So, and I, I know that the Michigan City, city workers are, there, the elected officials upstairs are working. They are gonna put something in the water bills um, so that people are aware of where the locations are. We've got it on the county website. And again, as Monique stated, that is, uh, laporteco dot in dot gov. Go to the elections tab. You'll be able to find everything there. And if you do have questions, call us.
I have a question.
Yes.
Excuse me. Uh, how many of the early voting sites are there?
Early voting, there are two locations this time.
Okay.
There's Michigan City, and we believe that is going to be the corner of Ethan Wapash, and we're working on LaPorte. Um, we think it's the State Street Church, but we're just waiting for final verification from the church itself. And if that changes, I'll be everywhere letting everybody know. Um, and we do have, I mean, we, we have that mobile voting unit, so, which is great, because we can use that in the small towns. We can move it, you know, we, we like it for Michigan City and LaPorte or apartment complexes where maybe transportation is, is an issue for people. Um, it's phenomenal for assisted living facilities, because they can come out, they don't have to drive, they just come out, and we have, we have a wheelchair ramp and we've got everything. So we can get them voted that way.
I have a question. In your statement, you say you eliminated some. Why? Because, my part two to that. Because, uh, I remember that the church that I pastor was one of those voting area. My question was, I heard your statement saying you eliminated some. Why?
I believe the only thing we eliminated in this plan was the, so the locations within the schools. I, I don't remember eliminating a church. What church was?
And it calls for two. On Wall Bash.
Is that the, that's not the Sinai Church, is it?
No, 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 it used to be the old Jefferson.
So this happened a while back?
Yes.
That wasn't, I can't tell you why they removed that location. It may be that the church no wanted, maybe they no longer wanted to participate. I, I don't know.
I, I, I don't know, because you're talking to the pastor.
Yeah, I don't, I wasn't in office at that time. So, but if you guys are interested, let us know.
I have a question.
Yes.
So your old voting place is still gonna be your voting place if you desire, because my voting place is down the street from where I live. But when you said the new voting centers, I can go to any one to go, but that means I have to go across town to get to mine.
Well, no.
I can still use my old voting site. That's my question.
Yes.
Okay, that's all I'm
Yes, as long as it's still a location, you're good to go. And again, as long as it wasn't in the schools,
It was in
It'll still be there. Yeah, so you can vote at any one of them, and if you choose to go to, to the one, you know, right by your house, absolutely.
Okay, I get it.
Uh, which is the timeframe to turn in, uh, the applications, uh, absentee application? We've got a timeframe?
Yeah, it would be now until right around the end of the October.
I mean, you can say, uh, I get it from someone, I got to turn it right in. I don't have to turn it right in or, where does that?
If someone, if you have an application for
The application.
That would need to be turned in immediately.
Immediately, okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Heather?
No, just thank you for all the hard work, because I know this was something that you've been trying to do for a while, right?
It has.
Yeah.
I've had my eye on this for a minute, so I was really excited to get it done.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, we have, we have Rodney on Zoom. You got a question, Rodney?
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Hey, Heather, I just want to thank you for coming out. This has been a long battle to get these, uh, people just call them voting centers. But it's just basically you, you're going to still be able to vote at the same place you used to vote to, vote at. It's just out of the Michigan City area schools, finally. And, um, you can vote anywhere. You won't be, they will not be able to turn you around until you have to go to the other side of town, because this is not your location. That, those days are over with now. So hopefully this will increase voting. Thank you.
Thank you for asking me to be here.
Any other questions for Heather? If not, Heather, I got one or two, two questions. Saving the best for last.
Right.
Just in reference to clarification, the same rules and regulations that apply to the precinct locations applies to the vote centers?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Second question, um, the counties surrounding us like Lake Porter, do they have vote centers?
Yes, well, Lake County does not. Um, and so I asked why, because they're a big county, and I thought, why? And it's honestly, I, my understanding, it is, it is their voting machines. Their, their ballots are so big that their vote, you can't load every ballot into those machines. So we have ninety-two precincts, which means, you know, next year, we're gonna have ninety-two ballots on every machine. So, and that, that's the problem there. They, I don't think it's, it's lack of desire to become a vote center county. I, I think they're just too big.
So is it, so is it safe to say that voting centers are surrounding LaPorte County? It's not that we're the new guy?
There are ninety-two counties in the state of Indiana, and we are number sixty-one to become a vote center county.
Okay, I was gonna ask you.
I'm not, I'm not
Oh, you're not done?
No problem. Uh, secondly, or third, uh, this takes effects in the fall election, correct?
Right now, yes.
Okay, now, is there a schedule for the mobile van prior to this?
Finalizing all of that right now, which is typical for this time of year. We, it's not normally together until, until it's time, so. And once, once all of that is done, then it will be on the county website. We will publish that schedule in the newspaper.
Prior to the election?
Yes.
Gotcha.
Yes.
Okay.
And I'm sure you'll see, we'll take pictures and put it on Facebook and we'll do it all.
Okay, and, uh, if someone needs to reach you other than the website, is there a phone number?
Yes, two one nine, three two six, six eight zero eight. I'll give you Taylor's extension, that is two four seven one. And that's only because I'm not usually sitting at the desk.
Of course not.
But she is, she is our elections deputy. So any questions that you have regarding elections, if she can't answer it, she will find me and we'll get it answered.
Okay, thank you, Kenny.
Thank you, ma'am. Sorry for interrupting you, Vice President.
No problem.
I do want to ask you, Heather, even though I'm so in agreements with the voting center. I mean, I haven't never seen it done, because I haven't been outside of Michigan City with voting. But, um, just for, in general, has there been any negatives about voting centers anywhere that you may have heard?
So I, I went all over the county all summer long, um, talking to, like I said, anybody that would listen about the vote centers. And I, the only pushback that we really got, and it wasn't, wasn't many people, it was maybe a small handful of people. Um, they, they had fears that our machines are connected to the internet. So I want to state right here, right now, our voting machines are not connected to the internet. They are not secretly connected. They are not with our knowledge connected. They are not connected. And in fact, our machines are so old, I don't know that they would be capable. So they are ancient. Um, the new electronic poll books are connected. They are on a private secure server. Um, and then I heard you put our voter information online. No, your voter information has been online. We just didn't know it. So, with, those are secure, but what that does is once you check into one of those electronic poll books, the, all, all the poll books communicate with each other. So if you go vote right here, you're not gonna hurry up and go six blocks away to go vote again, because when you go to check in, they're gonna say, no thanks, you already voted, stealing.
Oh, that's, I guess, that's good.
Yeah.
Can you take, can you take in a cheat sheet with you?
You may. It, it, it needs to be small. It needs to be something personal for you, but yes, you may.
Okay.
Piggybacking off that question, if a person, a senior who has a hard time reading or hearing, can someone go with them?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, they can. And we do have forms that would need to be filled out. We have all kinds of great stuff, so.
Prior to them going?
Yep.
Gotcha. Thank you.
You would fill it out when you, when you
Come in, right.
You also can still go to the homes available, right?
We do. We, um, if someone is homebound, they absolutely cannot get out. We do have a travel board team that will go into the home, and that, that team is made up of a Democrat and a Republican, and they actually take a voting machine into the home so that the voter can easily vote right there. Give us a call. Uh, two one nine, three two six, six eight zero eight, extension two four seven one.
Any other questions for Heather?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Get your rest. Election season is almost coming. All right, uh, we, uh, Commissioner, we're sorry to your agenda. We are at the old business category, is there any old business for this board to be addressed? Non-business, we, we, sub community reports, education, do we have a report from the education committee? Nothing from the education, uh, help, do we have anything from the help? My non-help will be having the breast cancer walk. Uh, at ten o'clock, and that will be at Pentecostal Temple. Right there on Wall Bass, and I'm encouraging, uh, this committee. To be a part of that walk because the breast, uh, breast cancer walk will enable. Um, the nonprofit to, um, take. Uh, exam of women's and men, we only look at women, but. I'm finding out that so many of them have breast cancer. So it's imperative that all of us participate in this breast cancer walk. On September thirty at ten o'clock, uh, and I'm looking. And I'm looking, and I'm looking to see you there because I will be there. Yeah, because, uh, it would be at the church that I pastor. Twenty-seven, twenty-two, Wall Bass. Okay, thank you. Moving back up, I was just informed that we have some information from the education committee.
Yes, sir. He said Kenny.
I'm sorry.
I don't do Commissioner Fly.
Commissioner, Commissioner Fly.
Appreciate it, bro.
No problem.
Um, with education, I'm sorry, you guys, I forgot to tell you guys that Fly High Youth Services. This is a nonprofit organization that helps tutor the inner city youth in Michigan City, Indiana. And we've been having a SOR program since two thousand and nineteen. We've been going up and down, but that's currently, we've been going gradually up. This, uh, program consists of, um, a lot of kids that somewhat take care of their own selves. And, uh, kind of cheer their own selves. Uh, when they come home from school, there's no dinner on the table, and I say that is a bad or good thing, but mom's gotta work to pay the bills. Kids gotta, you know, make them a sandwich and keep it moving. You know, uh, mom's them, they're not, not there to help them watch if they doing their homework or not. You know, and seeing if it's completed or not. So that's where our kind of specific program come in at. What makes us unique and different from all of the other after-school programs. Such as Boys and Girls Club, even the YMCA. And we do go out and pick these kids up with our own bus and, uh, so we don't have any negligence to saying, well, we don't have a ride. Can't get them there. We don't want no excuses given here. And so we are starting my fall sessions of September twenty-eighth. New and improved, and then we are ready to, uh, rock and roll. We have a lot of different sponsors, a lot of different, uh, grand tours that's helping us. And with that being said, I'm looking forward to a, a great season with Fly High Youth. Um, we don't just do fall and summer and spring, we do it all year round. Right after school is over with, we go into our summer program. Um, mostly it's not really about the money, it's really about the time. So we encourage anybody that would love to come and volunteer and give us a hand with these youth, we'd be gladly to help. I mean, gladly to, uh, accept you in with all hands and honors. We do do criminal background checks as of now. We don't, we do not exhibit or exclude criminals, but we do exclude violent crimes. Crimes against children, um, things of that nature, but just as a job, we don't exclude felons in general. Felons sometimes have the most experience you can have for a kid that's in going down their road. So, okay, that's all I had on education. I'm sorry for forbidding you guys.
Where is this location?
Uh, you know where it said, well, we all that New Hope, I mean, uh, the Hope Center, Center, two twenty-two McClellan Avenue. Quite a few organizations in there, they really are in com- uh. In coordinate for a lot of organizations, do a lot of things out of there, N W A C P, couple other black organizations, uh. And we really glad to have the Hope Center over there providing for different organizations to provide. Help for the immediate community and us surrounding. So the Hope Center is two twenty-two McClellan Avenue. Michigan City, Indiana, and this program we have is not for a walk-ins or this and that. We have our children, we have them picked already, but we do dish in and dish out.
With the time slot.
The time slots vary sometimes, but most of the time before thirty to six thirty.
Okay. Any other questions?
That's the old Park School pastor times.
Yeah, that's the old Park School building, the, the Hope Center over there on Cleveland Avenue. Big old building with a lot of things in there, gyms, um, kitchens, everything, you can facilitate a lot of things there. We really love it there at Park, uh, the, the Hope Center.
Okay, employment, uh, Monique from, uh, La Porte County was our employment, uh, program. In addition to that, our local hospital, St. Francis, they're having a job fit today. From ten AM to five PM. And you can go to that website, where any further questions, criminal justice, is there a criminal justice report?
Um, not at this time. We will be, um, having. Uh, a tentative meeting coming up so that we can discuss, um, an additional plan of action for, um, a field trip, another field trip.
Okay. Social factors, do we have a report for social factors? You wanna highlight anything?
I just highlight that, um, the social factors committee met on September seventh at Michigan City Library. Um, only Linda and myself, uh, showed up. We discussed, um, what types of programs that would help enhance the youth in our community. And we mentoring, uh, trips to colleges and museums, uh, to partner with Michigan City Area Schools Lunch Buddies. Um, with the Lunch Buddy Program, eat lunch with the students during their lunch hour at the schools and, um. And then also, um, volunteer maybe at the Safe Harbor After School Program. And, uh, we waited till like five, the meeting was supposed to start at four thirty, nobody showed up, so that was the end of that meeting. But I am asking each of the commissioners to check your schedules and see if maybe, um, you could help us by coming up with, uh. We're gonna do quarterly meetings, and, um, if you, uh, would like to. Join the soc- social factors committee, then please send me an email, I. Where's my, oh, yeah, my email is on this, so please send me an email and, uh. We're gonna set up the quarterly meetings, so that way everybody will know in advance.
I have a question under social factors. I know that we have tentatively set up, um. A field trip for all the commissioners to go to the, um, Friendship Gardens. Um, the time, the time, um, that she had available, I think ran into the holidays. Do you know, do you have any updates on that?
No, we haven't rescheduled it. I sent an email out, um, I didn't get any response, but, uh, she had suggested maybe. Uh, the sixteenth or the twenty-third. And so I didn't get any response, so that's the last we got.
Okay.
Any other questions for social factors?
Yes, Chairman, you, you are, you're moving swiftly. He was at criminal justice, uh, immediately when he said he had no, no inquiries. That was just one section of criminal justice. I'm on criminal justice too, and I would like to recant and go back to that.
No problem.
Okay, I appreciate you. With criminal justice and my, and my, uh, encounters with criminal justice and my observance. And the things that I do have to mention upon the criminal justice. The shot spotters that we have, uh, included inside of our environment. And our neighborhoods and the cameras and the systems that we have placed them, first off. The, it's invading. It's invading, we put in them and people's yard, and if they're not the people's yard, you wouldn't know it's not their yard. They say this is city property, cause it got two feet of city property there, but yet it's right in someone's yard. And, uh, it's been a debate of saying who's, who's the questionnaire, who's the problem for having them there. And, uh, trying to put a blame on a certain particular party or persons. I think the blame doesn't go to persons, I think the blame goes to the shot spotters and the whole conjunction of what's going on here. What's going on here is we are continually have continuous shots. Nothing has slowed down, no one has been caught because of these amazing shot spotters that relates plates. Visions of cars, peoples that's in the surroundings, um. Network pictures from the skies, none of that has transpired. No one has been captured, no youth has slowed down because they scared of a shot spotter. Only thing these shot spotters have done was angered residents and all of the following for having them in their yards. And invading their property. Um, nextly on criminal justice. We have a gang of kids running around here nowadays thinking that it's good to have a body. Um, in layman terms, a body means a, a kill. Now, this is facts while I'm speaking on, and it just sounds so brutal, but you have to speak in their terms. And so be careful with the terminology, that kids are not like we used to be. We are fighting, make up and fight and make up. These kids, as you've been knowing lately, and you've been seeing enormity, two murders not unsolved in the basements. As you've been seeing lately, gunshots, um, all throughout, everywhere. But we have, uh, I don't know if shot spotters, are they even incorporated yet, or is it just video? I'm not sure, but be careful. If these kids want bodies, they're not scared. They're not scared of prisons, they're not scared of your repercussions. I'm telling you, face to face or not, they blow your head off and be happy that they got a body. Yeah, honestly, they doing it to their own friends. It's called backdooring, um. You know, I have to be up on certain things like this. I'm a youth provider. I'm not the best youth provider. I could do better. But I'm around them kids, and I listen, and I watch them. And, 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 uh, it scares me to the point where I started wearing bulletproof vests. I wasn't wearing that for, for just show. I wasn't coming up here and running around with bulletproof vests just cause I, I'm here to have bulletproof vest. Heck, no, I was doing my life, cause I gotta go in these neighborhoods to pick these kids up. So, uh, with that being said, we, uh, we gotta do a darn better job with the shot spotter. I voted for it. Well, I didn't vote for it, I got on that podium, the city council was here, and I said, hey, okay, all right, I'm A, A one to it, let's go. I'm with you. You know, and I said, good thing I'm on the right side of the law now, cause the way they described it, it's like, man, you're gonna get caught less than two minutes, you shoot a gun. No, no, unless they got some more encorpus to do to it. Uh, that's all I have to say about the criminal justice side.
Okay, is there anyone else? Yes. Rodney?
Yes, I just wanna say one thing about, uh, for criminal justice, uh, being the chair, right, a co-chair. I just wanna say, um, there is a lot of violence in our community, a lot of gunshots, a lot of nonsense going on. Um, a lot of the kids in the city look up to a lot of us, and we have to be role models. Not only that, we have to also, when we hear of trouble, we need to tell what we hear. We need also tell what we see. Uh, we have to be partners with the city and with the police department. Um, I don't think the shot spotter is gonna do too much for us. But we as citizens can look out those windows and look and see what's going on, and we need to report it. Again, uh, a lot of the young people are looking, uh, adults are even looking at how we behave. So that is a very, uh, important role in combating this, this stuff that's going on in our community right now. I'm just leaving it at that. Thank you, Mr. Millsap.
Thank you. Any other comments reference to, uh?
These shot spotters. Oh, this shot spotters, that's in the city, county, state? Where's that from?
It would be in Michigan City that they put out.
What's that spotter? It takes guns gunfire. And supposedly kicks in videos of the area, some places they even have drones that are doing it. And supposedly this will get the police alerted in a timely fashion and allow them. To visually, uh, make license plates, color of cars, things like that, van or whatever, and make an arrest.
Swift.
Okay, any other questions?
We got, uh.
I'd just like to add, Mr. Chair. The shot spotter, when a shot, allegedly when a shot is fired. It locates, uh, uh, gives you a central location, and it's supposed to automatically send a feed to all of the laptop that's in the police cars. And to the central office, and then it, they should be able to pinpoint where the shots came from, and they'll merge on that. But here lately, if you listen to your scanner or you, um, paying attention to what's going on. It's still the same thing that reports shots, citizens. And, um, and I just, me personally, I just, I, I'm, I'm, I hope that someday it may work. Uh, I don't see that working right now, but, uh, every one of us, if you're really concerned. We need to go to the border works meeting, and you need to show up at the city council meeting. Um, remember, hold your people, hold people accountable who you vote for. Thank you.
Thank you, and with that being said, uh, who is the chair of the criminal justice?
I'm a co-chair.
Co-chair. Uh, if it's okay, uh, since we have so many questions reference to the shots fire program. Is it possible, maybe we can, someone from the committee can reach out to our MCPD and get someone to. Come and share with us the knowledge of the program?
We will put in a request.
Yeah, I can see about doing that.
Okay, good. All right, any other questions reference to, uh, criminal justice? If not, uh, social factors, and I apologize for going so fast.
That's okay.
You didn't mention anything, so I kept going. Uh, criminal, uh, social factors. Oh, yeah, I had a question though. I noticed that you held your meeting at the Michigan City Public Library, is that permanent? Because in the past, it was the Emmett Wise Center on Grace and Michigan Boulevard. Are we going back to that, or is this a permanent location?
No, it's just been more convenient at the library.
Okay. But Emmett Wise is still a possible location.
Thank you for that suggestion.
And the reason, and the reason being is because Fifth Ward, uh, everyone mentions that they looked forward to going. Cause it was a couple blocks away, walking. So, uh, just so you would know, that the neighbors in the area didn't mind walking to the location. Plus the Emmett Wise is part of the North Central, uh, Action Program, and they're so used to going there, so. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, any other questions on the community points? If not, following the agenda, we are at the public comment. Three-minute limit, is there anyone from the public that'd like to speak?
Uh, yes, this is Tommy Kalavich from thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. I'm also a member of the Michigan City Fire Merritt Commission, the common council's appointee. First of all, I think we all wanna send our prayers out to our brothers and sisters over in Mother Africa with the. Friday, we had the devastating earthquake in the country of Morocco, we lost three thousand people. And the Monday, the devastating flooding in the country of Libya, they said they reported there's five thousand dead. And it's, it's just tragic. I was so, um, uh, one, and Monday was also nine eleven, we wanna never forget nine eleven, all the firefighters and police and all that. You know, we lost our lives in nine eleven. Okay, I got some good news, uh, the county on October, October nineteenth, the county will be conducting another tax sale. These are the properties, people follow me out of, you know, get free property installments, or the county will sell your property. They do have the list up on the S R red site, and there, there's probably about almost two hundred parcels here, right here in Michigan City. That you can, you can go there and bid on the bidding, they'll start putting their behind on their taxes, and you know, they got a one-year redemption period. But, you know, here's a great opportunity, you could, maybe you're looking to get a young adult out of your house to get, get a. Maybe a good fixer-upper for them, or, you know, you wanna get a, get a nice open vacant parcel. You have a nice place to have your family come over and have all your picnics and barbecues, or have a place for your children to go play. You know, make, make, put an infill house on there, and we can always hear about affordable housing, well, here, here's your chance. I also got some good news to report on, talk to black owned businesses. I also got some good news to report on, talk to black-owned business here in Michigan City. Uh Miss Kalaya Kiki Davis and her mom, Miss Bevis, they're the owners and the proprietors of the Hearts Enhanced Childcare at the other my, under my block, thirteen oh two Ohio Streets. They purchased the Emphonic's Building at uh at at on a corner of Kelly Metnishian Boulevard. Uh uh they're gonna be fixing that up, and it's gonna be, they're gonna be relocating there. It's gonna be now the Hearts Enhanced Preschool Academy. I think a lot of them, I know she's probably one of the most creative and genuine people I know, and I think it's gonna be magnificent. That's that's really exciting. I am also uh happy to report that we had our uh written examination, we had forty-nine applicants to become new members of the Michigan City Fire Department. Like, oh my three, just tell me the sound. I uh uh unfortunately, twelve of them didn't show up, so we did test thirty-seven of them. And unfortunately, out of the thirty-seven, fourteen did fit, but Saturday, we're gonna be conducting our physical agility test. That'll be the next phase with.
Excuse me. How many black, how many?
But there, but when the test, there were five black men, the the the, I don't know if they passed or failed, and there was one woman. It was also minority of Hispanic and Asian descent there, but uh the ones I did pass, pretty much they're all going to be lateral transfers from other fire departments. Very impressed by them. Some, there were like three of them out there like ten minutes before eight, waiting to waiting for the doors to open again, and the testing didn't start till nine. They're all there in their shirts and, you know, they the ladder, they just whip right through the test, and you know, we had the ladder climb at the school administration building, I had to go up the ladder seventy-five feet at a, at a seventy-degree angle, it was something to see. And um I just wanna go through everything that they have to go through for the physical agility testing. I, I would come as your Willie Mills app easily, I'm done.
No, you're getting close, this one.
Okay, I just wanna go real quick, cause I know you you actually did this.
Right.
Okay, the physi- this is right on the city's website. The physical agility test consists of eight separate events. This test is a sequence of events that requires the candidate to progress along a predetermined path from event to event in a continuous manner. This is a pass fail test on a validated maximum total time of ten minutes and twenty seconds. The sequence is as follows: stair climb, seventy-pound vest for three minutes and twenty seconds. Hose drag, one and a half inch hose line for one hundred feet. Equipment carry, two saws for seventy-five feet and return to shell. Ladder raise and accession, hand over hand ladder lift using each rung. Forceable entry, use a ten-pound sledgehammer until buzzer rings. Search, call through a sixty-five-foot tunnel. Rescue, drag a one, drag a one hundred and sixty-five-pound mannequin seventy-five feet, that's twenty-five yards. That's the core length of a football field, and a ceiling breach. Push and pull a sixty-pound hinge door with a pole spike eight times. So they gotta do this in ten minutes and twenty seconds.
On the border, Tommy, three minutes has been reached. Thank you, brother.
I was gonna let you close out with that, but any information that they need can be found on the Michigan City Fire Department's website, correct?
Right.
Okay, good.
Thank you, Tommy.
Thank you, Tommy.
And in closing, the consent decree is still being followed.
Yeah, we're, I'm gone one hundred percent of this, you know, the consent decree in nineteen seventy. For every three openings on the Michigan City Fire Park, two of them gotta go to a minority or a woman. And it's minorities of all races, and I asked our city attorney this, this of our, of our African-American, Hispanic, and Asian, Middle Eastern. That that's one, and I'm very important to me.
Bottom line is still being followed. Correct. Thank you. Anyone else with public comment?
Yes, oh, there's someone right there.
Did you have public commissioner?
You come to the mic, please.
Come up to the mic, sir.
Yes.
Just state your name and address, okay?
How you doing? My name, Donnie Allison, uh my address, Three Valley Court in Michigan City. Uh, I'm a peer recovery coach at Swan Center. And what that is, is a a person formerly living in addiction that's helping other people in addiction with mental health as well as addiction. Uh, this year I have seven years clean and sobriety, I mean, except actually Saturday, I have seven years clean and sobriety. Thank you. What uh I have been coming across dealing with clients that's going through sobriety is once they out of treatment, uh they don't have no place to go but to uh one N A meeting that we have here in Michigan City. Uh, we in the empty stage, the beginning stage of trying to build a recovery cafe here at in Michigan City, which would consist of helping people with mental health and substance abuse, get their IDs, social security cards, just the beginning stages of life again. Uh job applications, resumes, uh just trying to help people get back into the normal things of society. Uh, we are now holding it every other Wednesday at nineteen fourteen at uh Temple uh Worship, I mean Temple Fitness Center, uh uh I just letting everybody know, uh they saying if you not if you're not part of the problem, what are you, what are you doing to be part of the solution? I'm out here dealing with different people that's struggling with addiction daily. And it's a great crying need for people in our community to find these resources and help. And I'm proud to be part of the solution. Uh, they say when something was so freely given to you, you got to, you have to give it back. Recovery been such a great thing to me, it's like eating your mother's best dessert. It's been so great, you wanna share with everyone. And I just wanted to formally introduce myself and.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
What time, what time is that meeting?
It's every other Wednesday from seven to eight. Right now, uh we doing it not this week, but next week. Uh, as me being a part of this job, I've been able to go to Chesterton South Bend, and they have a lot of great things going on in the mental health and the substance abuse. And every client that I take out there, they ask, why can't we get it here in Michigan City? So I'm crawling and digging to try to get it here in Michigan City where we can be a resource from their person to the community.
What's that address again, please?
Nineteen fourteen East Highway twenty.
Evergreen Plaza?
Yes.
Okay.
That's Pastor Gass.
Pastor Gass.
Okay, how do you contact?
Uh, you can co- contact me at uh two one nine, two four nine, two one seven zero or D Allison uh swanson center dot org.
Okay. Any other questions? Were you with a good organization, Swanson Center? So keep going, okay?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, any other public comment?
Yes, oh, go ahead.
Any other public comment?
Okay, yes, public comment. Since I don't see Commissioner comments.
Okay, can we officially close public comment, then you can commission this comment, okay? All right, what was your Sam thing?
Okay, um twenty twenty-three Michigan City Citizens Police Academy is gonna start up again. The Michigan City Police Department is looking for members of the community who would like to experience the inner workings of what it is like to be a police officer beginning Thursday, October the fifth, twenty twenty-three, from six P M. to nine P M. They're sponsoring an opportunity for members of the community to become closely acquainted with the roles and responsibility of the police department. And um it goes for seven weeks. It's Thursday, it'll be every Thursday is, I'm sorry. Participants will receive three hours of training each Thursday evening from seven weeks and many of varied functions of law enforcement. You must be twenty-one years of age, and you go to the applicant, I mean, to fill out the application. Go online to what is it, E Mitch, uh shoot, it says Blackwell, B L A C K W L L at E Michigan City dot com. Or go directly to the Michigan City Police Department front desk. And all applicants must be, all applications must be received by September fifteenth. The class fills up rather quickly, and if you haven't, I've taken that class, it's awesome. It is very good class for the citizens, if you're a citizen in Michigan City. And you wanna learn about what Michigan City Police Department does, it's an awesome class, and they feed you well. The food is good, they feed you every night, and the food is good. So that's one public comment. The second public comment is the N double A C P uh lo- local chapter of the N double A C P is hosting the state convention. The N double A C P State Convention here in Michigan City, November the second through the fifth at P N W in Westville. See me for more information or check out our Facebook page, I think it's, it's supposed to be on there now. Our Facebook page for more information, or you can see me.
All right, thank you, Fay. And in reference to the uh Police Academy, I'm a graduate of that academy. And I'm telling everyone, it is very, very well presented.
Yes.
You can absorb the information that they give you, and it gives you a different outlook on the men and women of the Michigan City Police Department who serves the community. Uh, they really go through a lot of stress, a lot of education, but it makes you respect them a lot more. So I encourage anyone to attend the classes.
You can go online and the application is online, or you can uh pick up an application at the police department on Michigan Boulevard.
Now be prepared to uh donate that seven weeks.
Yeah.
Because if you miss a week, it's, it's a lot of ketchup, okay? All right, any other business brought in front of this board? If, if not, meeting stays adjourned at one o'clock even.